I'm assuming she'll pick. Okay. So, thanks, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting for seventeenth of February, right? I've got six oh two. Let's let's get into our meeting for the evening. And so on our agenda, we have old business, which will include a discussion and consideration of the commercial development review ordinance amendments, addressing commercial solar and wind facilities and telecommunications towers. So before we go very far, Craig, you'd like to?
So in my thoughts, the last two weeks, we're trying to figure out what to regulate as far as solar. None of us know anything about kilowatts, power and this and that. It seems like a half acre is a lot of panels not to be regulated. So this is my thought. Do it by numbers, we can all count. So rooftop and up to including five ground panels, those rooftop panels, five of them, unregulated.
So these would be exempt, Craig?
And then six panels to twenty-five panels. Have a buffer for the road and a butter. And we can set size of it on the panels. So just don't buy the West Road, it's a fairly large panel. So with the set of size and slimmering on the panels, and they could be accumulated, so they can put any size panel. The square footage should decide on the panels. And then.
Would those require a permit?
Yeah, because they have to be screened. There's no setbacks, there's no. Pretty much, they're gonna have the twenty-five panels. And just make sure of the screen and put the road and a butter. And then from twenty-six up, we regulate to whatever we want to make the regulations.
So so in this scenario, rather than going by the number of kilowatts or megawatts.
We don't know.
Right? And just going by the count of the panels? Yep. Yeah, yeah, all right. Well, thank you. It's a good thought. I'm sure.
So you got a total of thirty-five panels on the ground? Or twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five in the ground? And then five panels up on the roof?
No, that was all here. So it's roof and five ground panels. And or that's unregulated.
Oh, exactly. Five on the roof and five on?
No, 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 roof panels, the whole roof, whatever you want to do in the roof. We don't want to regulate the roof.
Oh, okay.
And including five ground panels if they wanted it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And then from six to twenty-five, just require a screening from the road and the butters. And then regulate twenty-six above.
Okay.
So so we were guessing last week, there was what fifty, fifty-five panels. There was a guesstimate. We don't know in a half acre. So this takes the guessing out. It takes everything out of equation. There's no not knowledge of kilowatts. There's no not knowledge. You know?
Yep. It's interesting. It's an interesting concept because it, like you said, it makes it simpler because you're just counting the numbers of panels. And whether or not a panel today could generate, you know, a certain amount, and then tomorrow it maybe doubles, you know, the amount. Those sort of ever evolving things are then taken out of the equation. It's just the number of panels that.
And the number of panels, the number of panels is dictated on the acreage size of it, size of it. So. You know? So we're not having fifty-five, sixty. You know, panels out there aren't regulated.
But, yeah.
Because that seems too many.
Okay. Good. That's good stuff. Um. But I don't know how the board feels about right now. Do we want to sort of run that example through kind of a day in the life of an application sort of thing? Or do we want to go through other comments about what's going on with the commercial with this part?
Well, I would just point out in follow-up to the last meeting, I fused Steve's proposal and mine as we discussed at that meeting. And that's in the board packet.
Exactly.
And I think we should discuss that first before we jump to conclusions.
Okay. Because I know that in the packet, it was presented. And Anthony made sure to say that he didn't already change anything in the CRDO, CDR. So let's let's uh let's do that part, George. So going through that fused part. Would you mind leading us through?
No, not at all. So a- as we discussed at the last meeting, I tried to do two things. One was to work within the way the ordinance is already constructed. Again, as we discussed last time, relying on impervious area to define what gets regulated and how Rich and Craig had comments and expressed interest in having some level of regulation for smaller facilities. And so working within the existing structure of the ordinance, we already have a code enforcement officer permit by rule process in in place. So I re- I divided it up, the universe into three categories. Exempt those that would fall into the smallest regulated category between three thousand and five thousand square feet of impervious area that would require a code enforcement officer permit, meet standards like setbacks and and screening as well as others, including ones that are already in the ordinance. And I I think, you know, we should talk about the big picture, the view from thirty thousand feet before we get into the weeds on, you know, how do we regulate each of these kinds of facilities? What standards do do we include? Which standards from the KV cog model do we include, et cetera? And then the larger so-called utility scale facilities would be fully regulated under the ordinance with the usual requirements or the most common requirement of getting approval from the full planning board rather than just the code enforcement officer. Now. You know, I stayed within the confines of our last discussion. I didn't try to break out of that, but so just three to five thousand. But Steve had talked about that group in his proposal at the last meeting. And and that's and then, well, that's that's really the overview, the the from there, the next thing is assuming we're still going to be using and relying on the KV cog model is at least a starting point of our discussions as we have them. Then you can for the facilities that aren't exempt, both the code enforcement officer ones that, you know, some of those could be included in terms of the standards that an application would need to meet. And then I I'm proposing that there should be some additional ones. Because of course, that group is far smaller facility, both in the area and in output than what KV cog had originally proposed. In their call. And then and then the utilities, so-called utility scale, these names mean nothing. They can be changed to whatever we want. Whatever people feel is appropriate, but then would be a combination of the KV cog standards plus a number of others that I've suggested that I think are fill some of the gaps, at least I personally think exist in the in the KV cog including the citing prohibition.
Right.
So that so that's just the overview. I I think the question we need to go back to is, are we going to work within the confines of the existing ordinance or are we going to invent something entirely new? I thought we were working with the former, Robyn.
Right, right. It it seemed to me like what our our track was, was to work within the confines of our existing ordinance to adjust that where we could and and revise that rather than rebuilding from ground up. That was that was my impression. And I think part of that had to do with efficiency, you know, of our time as well as being consistent with what we already have in place, both within our ordinance and how it relates to other ordinances that we have. I know that those are two big things from from my perspective.
Yeah. And as you noted in the noticed in the packet, Steve also submitted some additional information for the way I look at it, sort of real world perspective in terms of size of facility and stuff. And you know, that small, the the code enforcement officer permitted types of facilities would be larger than what your typical all-electric home would probably entail. So that's some real world perspective. If somebody had an all-electric home, it would be smaller than a smaller facility than what we're talking about there. I assume we still want to stay away from, you know, individual homes home use.
Absolutely. In in my opinion, I don't know how others feel. I I think Craig stated that that with his example, it was to stay away from regulating home facilities. So, yes, go ahead.
A couple of comments. Craig, I actually agree with you about reducing the size of the exempt maximum size of exempt facilities. We, the new, the new memo from George says facilities with less than three thousand feet of impervious surface area. We talked about how that would include the surface area of the modules plus the road boards and paths. You know, my three thousand feet was within the perimeter of the fence. And so I wrote that little thing to say, it seems to reflect now to looking at it as three thousand square feet of surface area.
Right.
The modules and the road.
Well, and the beauty of that is it it's tied to the environmental impact of the facility.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. I think, you know, actually, you brought up, well, measure the size of the modules. And that was a few weeks ago. And I thought, I mean, that makes sense. And so I started thinking that way. And then you started, you know, well, you want to keep it consistent with the other regulations, like subdivisions, et cetera, that probably look at roofs and the roads and is that a measurement of the impervious surface and I think the subdivision ordinance that you have or?
It it's a, yeah, for triggering when stormwater management plan is required and when phosphorus spectrals.
Okay. So why not make this similar to that? Because I mean, this, the solar ordinance counted the same way. That's the way I started thinking about what you were saying. And so if you do that and you start talking about what's exempt and what would be needed for a large home system, it's far less than three thousand square feet of panel area. And I'm assuming that the home system wouldn't necessarily have a gravel road built in impervious road, that they would just place it out in there on their land somewhere. And the trucks would come in and, you know, construct it, and then they leave and there'd be grass still there, it'd be nothing. And so if you were going to look at the at the modules themselves as to what would be required for a large home system, which I think Reed Field looks at twenty kilowatts. I think that's a reasonable figure for a very large home system, two two electric cars, oil heat pumps, you know, everything. That would require only about forty modules, the twenty kilowatts. And if there were two up, I mean, a lineup of twenty modules each three feet wide, it's like six, a row of sixty feet long, single row sixty feet long. And that would be the largest home system. Right now, we have three thousand square feet. If it it's about three times the size of that. So I would propose maybe a more like Chelsea has, I think, a thousand square feet or eight hundred and fifty, they said. I propose either using one thousand or two thousand rather than three thousand to cut the size of the exempt projects down to size.
I'd go to one thousand if we're going to use square footage.
Yeah.
But kilowatts, none of us know what the hell kilowatts are.
Right, right.
No, that's going to change, coming up, because the size of the pound is going to change.
Yeah, the amount on the penny, the amount of kilowatts on the package pound, but we're really concerned about the visual effect here, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you made it one thousand square feet of impervious surface area,
We have.
that's about fifty modules. If it was stacked two up, it would be twenty-five feet long, seventy-five feet total length of already. That's a big system.
How tall is that?
Well, you know, I think the current modules, I asked today a major management person, sales rep, okay, what's the top height of the newest modules that are somewhat bigger? And it's still only about nine feet.
Yeah, that's what I see. Yeah, all these new ones, you can look at the panels, it's eight foot tall. They're about the same height.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not gonna lie, I'm taking ten, twelve feet at the maximum high.
Yeah, yeah. I think twelve feet provides some, you know, buffer, but I I that that seems reasonable to me.
Steve, could I ask you a question just to help us out a little bit? Along the West Road, there is a white farmhouse that has a solar array.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, is that double stacked? Or is that, no, I I don't remember.
This is an older, larger one. And that's why I said you could do a cumulative when I said numbers.
Yeah.
So we decide on what a panel size is, and you can make them accumulate, because I just drove by that, I just saw it.
Okay.
And I was like, well, that's one big panel. That's not, that's not outrageous. But I want to want to see twenty-five of them up there.
Yeah.
You know, so we do an accumulative size panel. So the square footage is all there.
Yep, I I hear what you're saying. And I was hoping to kind of understand what, because I haven't studied that setup yet, but I drive by when I go to the transfer station.
Yeah.
And and I see, whoa, they're doing something for their house, it looks like.
Right.
And just try to try to relate that setup to what we're talking about here, if there's a way to do that.
I certainly hope we're not going to be regulating down to that size.
No, 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 no. I I don't, I don't want to. I'm just trying to understand what, like with Steve's suggestion about about something, I would like to know, is it possible to understand what that setup is compared to?
Well, I I think that I should go look at it again, but I don't think it's more than ten or fifteen panels. They call them modules, okay, in the industry. And I'm a little confused about how you're using the word panel.
Oh, modules, yeah. That one on the West Road is larger than the ones that you see in product, that you see in the customer, you see in new board.
Are you talking about the big one with the the uh the 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 big square one?
Right in the middle of the field.
Okay, no, it's.
That's an older panel.
Yeah.
It's less efficient. No one's even going to be using those anymore.
If it's if it's ten modules, it might be ten modules, something like that.
Okay.
So I'm suggesting that you, you know, you you make it fifty modules as the upper limit for exempt. So something five times that size. Whereas right now, that would be a thousand square feet of impervious area.
Yeah.
And three thousand square feet would be a hundred and fifty modules. So they have ten modules at the white farmhouse. I'm saying you could set fifty as the maximum exempt installation. And anything above fifty modules up to five thousand square feet of impervious area would be in this code enforcement officer slot of, you know, medium size. Anything above that would be coming to the plan.
So just a five, that size?
Yeah.
So just for, so what you were suggesting, actually, I I think you're probably not talking about Chelsea. Chelsea's five thousand square feet of panel area. But Greenville, what a lot of towns use this really funky way of measuring Greenville's eight hundred square feet of what they call total airspace projected over the ground.
Yeah.
God only knows what the hell that means, because nobody defines it, but it came from Maine Autobahn.
Okay, that's where it's.
I think other, other than so we could, you know, honestly, in in the way by using the ordinance, the way it's constructed now, we could certainly decrease the size of of the impervious area that would require a code enforcement officer permit. Still have setbacks, still have screening requirements. I have small facilities like that come to the flame board, I think it's absolutely nuts.
Right. We don't.
I mean, we don't regulate anything that's small in any other realm, realm of the business community to, you know, go out of our way to do it to the solar industry. It's just crazy. You know, but like a thousand square feet impervious, you know, that that that's something I could deal with.
Yeah. So George, am I hearing right that, like, in the example, because in the fused model that we have in front of us, the ones that are still exempt are are less than a thousand? Is that what?
Yeah, right. So, yeah, right.
And then?
Let me just interrupt and say, each module, we were using a figure of eighteen square feet last night. The largest, the newer, larger modules are twenty square feet, somewhat larger, so.
So there's your fifty.
Per module. So there's your fifty.
Yeah.
So that's the modules unregulated.
Correct.
That's more, I like to say. Unregulated needs to be small. And then code enforcement regulates the next tier. And I mean, fifty panels unregulated. Just a minute for me. That's why I was at, at unregulated, that five, six, five, plus your house roof. And then the the next stage just be a simple regulation of screening. And that when we get to the top tier, that comes to us, and then we have all our fifty panels is a lot.
So Craig, here's my perspective on this. On, I'm trying to relate this to how we regulate everything else that falls under this ordinance. Solar panels as it is, the solar firms are going to be the most stringently regulated commercial activity in town if we stick with this kind of a mo- this kind of approach. Even, you know, going down to a thousand. I mean, if we had, if we required every business that's come to us prior to today in town, or in our auto, whatever, to um deal with stormwater and phosphorous runoff at a thousand square feet of impervious area, nobody would have fallen underneath that. Nobody. Even the smallest little garage would fall. So we're we're just, you know, the question that we need to think about is, do we, you know, are we gonna get down to these really small commercial enterprises and regulating them by the planning board? Whether it's solar or others.
Yeah.
Because I think there needs to be a certain amount of fairness and equitable treatment.
A three-tier shoreline zoning is our most stringent commercial part of our commercial ordinance, but a three-tier, one that's exempt, one that has minimal that he deals with, and then bump up to where we take care of it.
So.
Yeah, I think what you and I are just disagreeing on
The size.
On size, yeah, on how small needs to be regulated by the by the code enforcement officer or the planning board.
The the common ground here is that both of you are providing, actually, three of you are providing a three-tier system. One that's exempt, one that goes to CEO, and then one that goes to planning board.
Right. But what goes to CEO shouldn't be fifty panels. Should be less than that.
Okay, so we may have to differ, we may have to agree to disagree on that. Because I I hear what you're saying, and I think I'm also hearing what George is saying, is that, is that trying to think about it in terms of what would be applicable in this town and what's fair.
Put fifty panels right beside the road with no screening. Why you involve, they're pop up, if they pop up everywhere, why involve having any set if you're not going to regulate fifty panels?
Can can I, yeah.
Sure.
Ask, I want to sell myself into this. So you saying you have the engineering part of this square out, that fifty panels will fit in a thousand square feet?
A thousand square feet of impervious surface area of the panels. If you had, if you had them set up in, let's say, two or three rows, it would cover an area of, let's say, two thousand square feet, like the size of a house.
Yeah, so so that's that's what I'm getting at.
A fifty panel installation would be about the size of a moderate size.
And so how many panels could you fit on a rooftop?
Well, Fred's a.
Two thousand square foot house.
Well, you only want to put the panels facing on the south. Most houses have fairly limited application on their roof, which is why a lot of people are now moving to ground now to even her home systems, like like that one on the West Road we saw. So it's hard to say on a roof, you can't fit that many. Didn't tell you exactly.
Then then also on the roof, you cannot, there's new technology that it follows up.
Yeah, that's out, yeah, all of that.
Right.
Well, you you cannot, you cannot do that on a roof. So let's go back again to my my concern here. So you're talking about about one thousand square feet for fifty pounds?
Yeah.
So it will be an area probably of forty by forty will make that.
Something like that.
Yeah. So that's not, that's not bigger than this room.
Doesn't matter. It could be two hundred by three hundred if they want it, that's a bit.
No, I don't think that's big.
If they wanted to spread it out, I mean, I know it's better to put them closer together, but.
It would be, I I was trying to think of how would it, how would it look in comparison to this room?
Yeah.
I'd say it would be twice as big as this room, or three, two to three times the size of this room.
And that's the amount, the size that we are suggesting.
Yeah.
We're suggesting not to be regulated, to be exempt.
Correct.
So you, you, even when fifty pounds will fit in that area, twice the size of this room, you still will object to that?
They're gonna be popping up outside of roadside, yes.
But.
Two hundred feet off the shoreline, two hundred fifty feet off the shoreline. I really wouldn't want to see them, myself.
Well, I I don't know. Most people, most people that have. More, I I I don't know, most peo- most people that have. Properties, they will not put this panels in front of their houses, close to the road. If anything, they will put it back over there. Do you wanna see?
I wouldn't.
You want your your solar panels in front of the house? That can be seen on the road.
On a hillside.
So so one way to skin this cat, you know, to try to find some common ground would be. As much as I, you know, back when we were talking about Reed Field, I I didn't like the complexity of their their approach uh would be to have a fourth category. Uh. You know, because it it sounds like there's a limited number of things that are important to you, Craig, for these. Pretty small facility with, you know. Five or more ground mounted um panels uh. And uh. We could could have a permit by rule process. That it doesn't even require code enforcement permit, other than the normal building permit, which all these are gonna require.
Right.
Uh because of their dollar value, but uh the uh. Uh but there's no real standards there, other than what maybe the National Electrical Code, I don't know, something like that. But the uh the um. And so they just, you know, submit a memorized form promising to follow whatever the standards are that we lay out for setback. S- screening, if that's one of them. Uh not being in the shoreline, well, I I I I'm not sure about. Well, anyway, not being in the shoreline zone might be one of them. I don't know, we can talk about that, but um.
Yeah, that's very insightful, because we did talk about having the the sort of PBR um model to follow.
Yeah.
Um at one point, we had talked about that, that we hadn't really digested it much, but it had, we had brought it up. Uh per- permit by you.
Hmm.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't here that meeting, so.
You may have been away.
Yeah.
I I would say that I I uh kind of uh would have cried here uh on the unregulated piece, I could see it small. Intense to me.
So yeah, so if I'm hearing you right, you you're you're thinking that. To keep whatever is unregulated to be the smallest value, smallest number of whatever it's gonna be.
You know, it's visual impact that that mitigated.
So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure to toss this out too, so. To understand that anything bigger than really small means it would be regulated.
But, yeah.
Right.
With a set of rules.
Yeah.
You know, that by up to us, bigger size.
Mm-hmm. And I just wanna make sure that we're being also fair to the CEO. Because right now.
This is John.
I mean, I I don't want to regulate a little pinky outfits. I don't wanna regulate group talk songs.
That's why we put numbers on them.
But I like, no, I do like the number game.
It makes it so simple. And rather than complicating it.
Well, except for the owner, except for the person that owns the solar facility.
What, they know if they have under twenty-five, they have to do this, they have over twenty-five, they have to do this.
But they'll be regulated in Belgrade when they're not regulated in any other municipality in this state.
Yeah.
I don't care.
I know that.
Why, I mean, why do we have to follow that? Why can't we make our own set of rules? That's what we had to do.
Craig, do you really want this level of regulation on other businesses in Belgrade? Because that's what I will argue.
We're talking about solar panels and a number of solar panels, that's it. We're not talking about other businesses. Other businesses are already regulated, we talk.
Nothing compared to what you're talking about.
How do you say that?
Because you're you're going down to the micro scale, you know, you're going down to the level that towns with zoning regulate at.
No, it's not going down to the micro scale and from six to twenty-five will be pretty easy. That's not micro scale, twenty-five panels is a micro scale.
Twenty-five pounds in a non-solar house, oh good. I mean, I mean, now what's gonna happen, what I ambition is gonna happen with all this energy market is that. Uh production of energy with a the river uh coal, whatever uh. Um manufacturing that we're doing now, there's losing so much CO2, is that we as a country, we're gonna move from that. To all this gases of solar power, wind power, and so on. And uh right now. For power in a house, where I'm hearing from Steve. We, this, the new will be all twenty kilowatts for a river house. And that will require right now a space of about a thousand square feet. So uh if we are getting on the van with a futuristic ban of of allowing our citizens to be able to afford that and. And engage in that, if they need to. They will be have the amount of energy that they need for the houses, although, as I said, this spaces are gonna shrink in the. In the same space that you allow only twenty-five, we're gonna be able to have eventually panels that power two, three houses.
Right.
So that that's. Who knows on the road.
So.
And and maybe, maybe right now, people will not even be able to afford getting their household from fully solar anyways. I I just.
How much is fifty panels? Have to install. Second house with the batteries.
Oh, well, if you, I wouldn't think that, but uh. It would it would probably be three thousand dollars, thirty.
Most people will not be able to even afford that, but whoever wants to do it will not be able to do it.
I couldn't do it.
Now there's thirty thousand as a month. Especially that state. I always hope they go a lot like a hundred.
So it's just, I'm trying to, I I see, I see your your point in terms of the. What was gonna do to, if everybody will go that way, what will do to our town? But I don't think anybody will actually go that way, but one or two people who wanna power their house in town will not be able to do it. That's that's the. The balance that we gotta strike here.
Here, um. What, let me. This is sort of a rephrasing or putting in a different perspective of what I said earlier. If. We're, if the town of Belgrade is gonna regulate down to less than six panels. Uh with the ground mounted panels. Uh. You know, maybe that's appropriate, maybe that's not, but it's certainly not appropriate for an ordinance that is regulating non-residential development only. Because my sense is, at that level, you're not, you're talking residential development.
You know, the.
The commercial ordinance isn't regulated, uh six is un- five is unregulated plus your house panel.
Yeah, I know, but the point is.
The CEO is regulating, so we're we're half of what you're talking. Already, so you're not micromanaging, you're not dropping down to a pea little bit. Before you get into the commercial ordinance, it's right there, it's just less than what what you're going for.
Well, could I just say something too, because I I think if it is gonna be regulated by the CEO, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't we have that um language in the commercial development review ordinance?
Yeah, the size that the CEO, but we wouldn't, there wouldn't be, those commercial ordinance wouldn't be regulating it.
I I guess I, I guess I was thinking that it would be be um. Because with N ordinance. And someone else with more knowledge, please let me know, but I was thinking that N ordinance would spell out where the CEO would pick it up.
Right.
So it would have the exempt stuff, right? What's not exempted goes to the CEO.
Yeah.
And what doesn't go to the CEO and is above goes to the planning board. So I was thinking, maybe I'm wrong about this, that the that the vehicle for that is the commercial development review order.
Yes, but it still doesn't mean that the CEO is taking taking that that it comes to kick to us.
Correct, correct.
So I don't get what you're trying to say.
Is it, all I'm saying is.
Spelled out here, yes, but it designates it to him. It's not in, it's not the commercial ordinance regulating it. It just says that the CEO is is a permit by the CEO.
Yeah, and I'm I'm agreeing with you that it would go to the CEO. All I'm saying is that it sounds like we would have it laid out in the commercial development review.
Yes, so.
That's all. So I think, I don't I don't wanna speak for George, but when we have N ordinance that spells that out, is that what you're saying is is the difference?
Um. I'm sorry, I I don't exactly follow what you're.
The CEO, whether it's described in the ordinance, commercial ordinance or not. If it's a CEO's responsibility and then we describe it in here, that has nothing to do with the with us and the commercial ordinance, because we designate it to the CEO. So it doesn't mean it comes to the planning board.
I I understand, I agree, I don't disagree whatsoever. All I'm saying is it's laid out in the ordinance.
Yeah, well, we're we're missing something here, though. First, something has to fall under the ordinance for anybody in town to regulate.
Correct.
CEO or planning board. Then after it's triggered, the ordinance, does the ordinance decide whether it goes to the CEO or the planning board? Small projects go to the CEO, big projects go to the planning board.
Right.
Uh so, you know, unless we're gonna change the purpose and 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 the the whole framework of the commercial development review ordinance, which is a type of site review ordinance. Down to the level of zoning.
Right.
Uh we're working with the wrong tools.
Right, that's what I wanna get at.
What what you're talking about, Craig, is zone, is putting something into zone.
How is it any different than putting a square footage on, except for you're putting a number on it, so it's simpler to take care of?
Because we're trying to keep it at the non-residential commercial development stage and not get into regulating residential development.
I'm not regulating res- residential, I didn't imagine anything about reg- regulating residential.
The size you're talking about will be.
Yeah, the the it's a, uh let me see, that is the way I see it, Greg, is for instance, you have a mortar and you're expecting. This size outlet in the mortar, it cannot be more than five inches, or, you know, just making up an example. So we're telling that we are, we're restricting houses to five panels on the ground. Where we are expecting, with uh putting a spec on the development of the house.
I mean, any other commercial type of development that falls under this ordinance has to have more than five thousand square feet of impervious surface to fall under the ordinance. This would, we're already down to a thousand. I mean, we're five times smaller. It just doesn't, you know, I understand your point of view, Craig, but what you're talking about is a different ordinance, not this ordinance. You're talking about wanting zoning for Belgrade is what you're talking about.
No, not at all.
So let me just put it to what I was hearing too. So when we were talking about what would be capable by today's standards, right? By the numbers of panels and the what would would result in this number of square feet that we're also using, right? If what we're saying right now is is that. The uh twenty-five panels wouldn't do it, right?
No.
So so if I wanted to have a electrified house by solar panels in a residential place, just a residential place, twenty-five wouldn't do it. So it'd have to be ba- bigger than twenty-five, so that means I'd be coming. To you, right? So that would be part of the commercial development viewers, and what we're saying by the example that you have, just by the example was. That would be regulating residential things. Right? Uh uh of electrification of a residential place in the commercial development rev- review ordinance. So to me, that seems like it's probably not the right place to do it.
I don't see if he's if he's taking care of what that has to do with commercial.
Okay.
Is it common to ask about it?
Uh no.
No. It's got nothing to do with this.
Okay, so I think we'll probably add a little bit of a of an impasse on that part. I I think it's gonna be real important, though, to make sure we're we're talking about what tool we're talking about, which is a commercial development review ordinance. To best word, to best address the needs of these, the three tiers that we've generally talked about so far.
We need, of the other municipalities that have regulations regarding solar facilities that approach. Nobody goes down to scale that you're talking about, Craig, but approach that, they all do it through zoning. They don't do it through a site review ordinance or something comparable to our commercial development view, or that's why I think. You're trying to use the wrong tool. For what you wanna accomplish.
So Greenville, when there are eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's zoning.
It's forty, forty panels.
Yeah, that's zoning. They do it through zoning. Reed Field seventeen hundred to do it through zoning.
Why can't we do? Eight hundred throughout commercial ordinance?
Because I think we're regulating uh individual homes at that point, residential development, not commercial, not non-residential. And this ordinance is specifically designed to deal with one thing only, non-residential commercial development.
And I think that's the key difference. It's not the concept that you're talking about, because I think there's merit there, but we're just talking about what this ordinance can do.
And forty panels be commercial. If you set forty panels on a piece of property with no house there, just pump it into line, it's commercial.
Well.
Well, any commercial business can put up this any kind of system they want, yeah, they could make it.
They're gonna be getting contacts from CMP.
But, you know, I I have to say that when I thought about this, the way I approached it was, what would the largest residential, consumable residential system be? Would be forty or fifty panels. And I thought, well, that's a residential system, that shouldn't be in this, you know, commercial development review ordinance and. Leave it at that, that way it's clear cut, you know, I don't know how you handle, if you wanna see, you know, I mean, I I don't know what kinds of. Uh rules wo- would they face if a residence wanted to put up a system like that, existing, what what is it, is there a. Buffer strip requirement or a setback or anything, it's nothing, so.
No, no, nothing in town like Belgrade that doesn't have zoning.
Right. Well, you know, I I personally don't mind seeing those small systems, that's a matter of, you know, being it, so, you know, I can respect the fact that you you do mind, so, it's okay.
Sarah.
I usually thought that when we were talking about your commercial reviews, we were talking about, so I saw a form from what you're gonna be selling electricity.
Right.
So whether whether it's a residence or is the the business that runs out of residents in Belgrade. Wouldn't matter to me, what we're trying to to regulate here. Is the concept of a soft form that is gonna tap to the to CMP lines and sell the electricity there. That's, I'm getting confused on that, on what we're trying to to steer into.
Well, I I think the common ground was was the three-tier system, right? Both Craig and Steve and George have suggested that, and I think that's a healthy thing, right? And all have said, this is exempt. And they have the smaller portions. Right? And it's good to keep in mind the fact that. Where we go with anything to do with the commercial development review ordinance does not get into what is a residential activity. There are, there are problems by with trying to do that. With what we have now.
We find, yeah, we find that line.
Uh-huh.
Well, you know, I was thinking, uh, we got, we got small businesses in this town and some of your your your. Now we have uh uh people doing their business at home now. And uh so you're gonna have a lot more small businesses popping up.
Yeah.
We keep this, if we go on with Craig saying. So if we keep this, if we go on what Craig's saying and incorporate it in the commercial ordinance. We'll be able to capture the small businesses that develop in town. And, you know. And, but if I was a residential piece. You know, we're gonna, how do you define that? Are we gonna? Okay, is this, this time going to, uh, regulate residential? Uh, you know, power plants, you know, for the home, right now, or not, I guess, because this, this is. This does, you know, when you, that, you come down to a small size, you're gonna be looking at it, like I said, the, uh, the, uh, small business. Like, uh. Uh, repair shop, the way they're, or what is both in.
Iron iron.
You know, whatever, okay. Uh. Down in the village, you got some real estate agents down there, they got small businesses there, you know, so. Uh. They may, you know, they may want to put up some solar power panels in the backyard of the roof or whatever. So they can, they, you know, so we'll have a mechanism in place to regulate. Those, you know, the small businesses, right, as well as the big ones, because, you know, as we, we all know. But again, there's a void there on the residential, you know, piece. If I want to put up, uh, some, uh, you know, solar, uh, panels on my property, um. Yes, I can do what I want to do, right? If, that's not regulated at this point. So that's, this is a void. Do we have?
Right, like Steve's facility triggered the ordinance. Could, for a couple of reasons, you know, probably more than twelve hundred square feet of structure. More than five thousand square feet of impervious surface. That's all that exists now. We're talking about bringing it down. You know, five times in scale.
But, you know. I, I think, I personally think that's okay. Because we, uh, we can, if we have a. Ordinance there to handle the small businesses as well as the medium-sized businesses and large businesses.
I, I wouldn't clear, be, and, and, I, I'm talking about bringing it down five orders of magnitude. Craig's bringing, talking about bringing it down.
Come on, there's.
Lots more.
Yeah, right, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, with Craig's bringing it down with small to, uh. You know, the smaller side, as I said before, so it's just. I just want to clarify that the commer- we can bring it in, in under the commercial ordinance, the small, for the small businesses, that's what we can, yes.
I hear what you're saying, I just, I just don't see how that could, would work, I, I just don't see it. I, I don't, I don't see why you don't see it, I mean, so, it's fairly, I'll have to try to explain it, but.
Not, not in this ordinance, you know.
Right.
Like I said, the towns have regulated that scale, that small scale, that the residential scale. Do so through zoning, Belgrade doesn't have zoning. Uh, I mean, we're a laissez-faire town, uh, you know, uh. That's why this ordinance one is developed in two thousand and one, started where it did with, well, it didn't want to regulate every s- small commercial activity. Started at twelve hundred square feet of structure and five thousand square feet of impervious surface.
Well, then I guess you gotta, this board needs to think about. And, you know, process select people, do we want to consider? Uh, where does, where does the selectmen want us to go with this stuff? Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
So I'm still not getting. How you're saying we're dropping it way down. While we're dropping down is the exemption. And then we're tiering a second tier for the CEO. And then we're declaring what we're gonna have. So we haven't even decided on what, how far to go up for the CEO, which is just a CEO department. I mean, unless I'm totally missing on how government works and how everything works. I mean, you have an exemption.
Okay.
Forty panels, thirty panels, whatever, I said twenty-five. Then you have the CEO handling there between the next step where we picked up. So. Make it between twenty-five and fifty. And then we start taking care of fifty and above. I don't see where, where dragging down or making everything so minute and regulating households, I don't see that. Why is that, how is that stuff?
Well, you know, I think, uh, the, when you, when we go down the smaller, uh, dimensions here. What happens, and you know, for businesses. We get into the point where, well, some, the small businesses, uh, people's, you know. Can be the size of a residential, uh. A pro- piece of property, so we, we kind of migrate into that. Or then you can turn around and look at it and say, what about the, uh. Uh, uh, residential pieces of property that, uh, are huge, like, uh, Alpha One, he's a residential property. How big is that one? That could, that fall, that could easily be followed to commercial.
When is residential? So you nailed it on the head. That's exactly what we're saying.
Yep.
That's exactly what, uh, George is saying, and with that.
Right, they get, well, I'm not, I'm saying it, it, it. You, you, your residential usually a small couple acres, five acres, whatever, but you can get those residential pieces of property in this town in, in, which are.
Larger.
At twenty-five acres.
So you actually, you are agreeing with George.
Well, when, when you get into the big ones, yeah, but, but there's. The, the two ordinance is gonna sort of, the, uh, uh, residential, commercial ordinance. Will encompass your, your smaller, your, 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 your large residential stuff, all right? And then, uh, I'm saying that the, uh. The, the, so you understand something?
Yeah, 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 I follow you.
Yeah, so if, where do you, where do you draw the line? You know, at what point do we come up and we have to define, well, what's residential, then we, we, so.
So that's, doesn't permit, it's, we're talking about capacity electricity.
I can't understand what you're saying with that mask on, I couldn't hear you.
Okay. We're talking about capacity of electricity for a residential site. And the information we get from a person that has an engineering background. Is that for a residential site average. They're gonna need forty to fifty modules. And those will fit in an area of about eight thousand square feet. Okay, so that, that will supply a little hu- house.
A little house.
A little house will, will be a little bit more than a little house. It will be a house that probably will have a family of four or five, and then it have two cars that are electric. And that's going down the pipe, this country is moving in that direction, slowly as well as will be. So, so, so setting up that line there. That, down that road, thousand square feet down, is residential. This commercial ordinance will take care of the rest.
Right.
So. The residential is defined by the capacity that is nee- is needing. And we have a line there, and now this triggers in. So, put in this ordinance that beyond twenty-five panels. Have to be by this ordinance. That, that triggers this, this, uh, planning board getting in every single residence that wants to do solar power, basically.
No, it doesn't.
And, and that's, and that's, well, this is the thing, I pray. We have an engineer here telling us what, what it will take.
We have a CEO right there that's gonna handle the difference between the twenty-five and the fifty.
It has.
So they can be screened, so they can be, you know, simple regulations, so they can be screened. And they can have a little buffer from someone's house. Other than that, you're saying they could pop fifty panels ten feet from your house?
No, because we're, we're putting, we're specifying that. In the regulations, we, 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 that's gonna be part of what the CEO will pass. This is commercial.
Right there, there's nothing specified.
Oh, then we'll put it down.
We're not regulating it.
But we're not telling them how many panels to have. We're just saying we don't, we want a buffer.
How can you tell them what to do if you're not regulating it?
Because it was eight thousand square feet, and then we're gonna need a buffer into it. We're not telling them how many panels, they can put a hundred panels, or the panels become this big.
So you're willing to have fifty panels slapped right on your side of your house, right on your property line, without any regulations? So you're looking at what used to be a nice view, now you're looking at your neighbor's fifty panels for his house. With no regulation.
I'm saying that would be a regulation, you're taking out context what I'm saying, Craig.
No, you're not understanding.
Yeah, you're not understanding me either, I'm saying that we will go to a thousand square feet. Right, and we add that we need a buffer of, of ten feet or whatever. But I'm not gonna tell a, anybody in this town that they can, they're locked in into twenty-five pounds of, of, uh, solar power. That's what I'm saying.
Because right now twenty-five panels would not be sufficient by today's standards to electrify that small house.
That's why we have a disagreement. I, I, I see exactly what you want in terms of the status of a town, and I cannot agree more with you on that. But I think that specifying twenty-five panels, ha- by household, by household, is telling anybody that want to build a house in this town. Hey, by the way, you're gonna have, you're gonna be constructed to twenty-five pounds of electricity.
What the hell difference is that to us, eight hundred or a thousand square feet? It's the same thing, you're telling them this.
I don't like to use course words in the, in the dialogues, Greg, I wanted just to make sure that we understand what we're talking about. And, um. Regulating by panels, number of panels is, I, in my mind, this is not the way to go. That's been, that's like, uh, saying that everybody's gonna buy a car, have to have a muffler. That is five inches long or whatever, so we don't have enough, we don't have, uh, so much exhaust.
They do that, I'm not asking you.
Well. I like to do what my land would like to do, so, if I want to have enough power for my house. And I'm constructed to a certain area, I, I can't see why, but. Not just telling me how many stuff I can buy or not, so.
Every ordinance we have is telling them what to do.
Right, the ordinances will have standards and. Things like that. Setback to ordinance, all that.
And we can regulate the shit out of subdivisions, and we can regulate. You know, uh, even a commercial ordinance, pretty stiff ordinance, pretty much anybody that comes in and has to go through it, so.
Want to help.
And, uh. So we've already done all those, but now you want to be slack on the, on the panels, solar panels. Way I'm. As a business.
Can we, uh. We got, how much time we got? We, we, we're five minutes over.
Yes, one.
But we're gonna have to move on, so we're gonna have to come back and visit this again.
Yeah, I don't see a path forward myself.
Yeah. Um. You know, maybe the path forward is to, like what Pete was saying, to talk to select persons to see what vehicles they envision the town having. Because I think what's, what. They may have some ideas, Pete, I don't know.
They're the elected officials.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta talk.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right. So let's put this, this one to rest and move on to the next. Uh, thing. Which is. Shoreland applications, we've got Paul and Kerry Dennis. Uh, Mark.
Thanks, dude.
He's here, thanks, and Jeff. Is here, so, uh, you're proposing that at one ninety-four Sehagen Road. Map twenty-nine lot twelve, you want to demolish two existing camps? Then, in construction of one replacement camp, is that correct? And this is a no- currently a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot? Okay, great, take it away.
All right, uh, well, I think we've, uh, talked a little bit about this, uh, back in December. And we had, uh, this, this drawing, this shows exactly what's there now. Uh, with, there's, this is a great pond right here. And so we have a camp that's located, uh, mostly less than seventy-five feet. Can you like this first heavy line you see across here? Uh, I'm not sure. And we see one toward the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this is a little different than what we had last month, because we actually went out and made it with, uh. New, new code enforcement officer and, uh, gentleman from.
These, uh.
Yeah, Dave Savage from Oakland.
Yeah.
And, uh, we came to an agreement, the house is actually a little bit further back than we thought. So anyway. We have, um, this line going across here at seventy-five foot setback. The second line is the hundred foot setback line. Um, what we're proposing to do, and as we mentioned last. In December's, December sixteenth meeting, is demolish both this camp here and another one that's back here. And replace it with a single structure. Uh, the single structure will be more in compliance, because we're setting it further back, the, the front of it here now is. Uh, the only thing in that seventy-five foot setback is about, uh, ten or fifteen feet of a, uh, porch. Uh, and then. Uh, within. One hundred feet from shoreline, what you told us last time was we had the same area as this camp, it's here now. Existing camp has, uh, two thousand maybe three square feet. So, of, of structure. And so what we're doing now is putting. A little less, two thousand seventy-six square feet of structure in that less than one hundred feet. So it's, it's. You know, we're moving everything back, and then there's some more camp beyond that. The overall size of the camp is limited by the impervious surface ratio of the property. Uh, so that calculation is submitted back in February. February fourth. Um, but the total area of the lot and then the area within the shoreline is thirty-two thousand square feet. We're allowed a total structure, or total impervious size of twenty percent of that shoreline zone. This is probably like the last page in your. Yeah. Last page. I won't go along, I can go through that, or I can just say that we're providing less impervious surface than we're limited to.
Yeah, how much, how much, what percentage?
We're, we're allowed twenty percent, uh, there's an existing roadway in here that, that eats up some of that. Uh, this, we want to have a couple parking spaces and a walkway going from. From the parking spaces up to the house. Um, and so our allowable building area is about just under four thousand square feet. Um, total building we're doing here is thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven, thirty-five square.
Yeah, so was, was it all add up to? So, you know, what do you, what do you, fifteen percent?
It adds up to probably about nineteen percent.
Okay.
We're allowed twenty.
Yeah.
But we're nineteen, could be nineteen point eight, I don't know, it's very close, but we're just under that one, so.
Yeah, that's.
So that's, uh, that's where we're coming back now. Also in the ordinance, there, there are limitations as to how tall you can be within a certain setback from the water. Um, the first seventy-five, you can't be any more than. Twenty feet tall. So I've got a, a drawing, a probably a larger sized print of. These are the, the elevations, left and right elevation, looking at the sides of the camp from here to here. What I've done is put a blue line. This is seventy-five feet back, legs over here on, on this view, legs over here on this view, this is seventy-five feet back, so that goes right through. The, uh, the screen porch, the front. So where that goes through, just scaling off, uh, is about eleven feet, eleven point six feet. Eleven feet, six inches. So that's less than twenty-four hours. Uh, the existing camp, uh, or in, okay, in the, uh. Area less than, in this interim area between seventy-five and a hundred, we're only allowed to be twenty-five feet tall. And so. And so we are twenty-three, ten, twenty-three feet, ten inches.
And then you, another forty-five, so that's what, twenty-four.
Well, no, the, the house is twenty-two, ten, and then we're about a foot above the ground, so I call it twenty-four.
Ten to twenty-five, to seven to twenty-five.
And that's the, the, you know, the ridge of the house, that's the high point, is the ridge of the house right here. And that brought back a little bit, if you go back towards the garage area.
Twenty-three, ten, or twenty-two, ten?
The house itself, the architectural design is twenty-two, ten, I figure that you're gonna have exposed, so twenty-three, ten is the number I, I think is gonna be very close to that.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it'll, over a leeway, fourteen inches of leeway. So I think you wanted to see elevations. Elevation of all four sides.
I just had one quick question. The little house, that, that's gone, right?
That's gone.
That's incorporated into the bigger building.
Yeah, the, the, that, that's, that's going away, and, and this, one of the little crosshatches on it, those are both going away. There's a little shed back here that's staying.
And that's that, how many feet is that?
That's beyond the two hundred fifty foot.
Okay.
And this is, this is the two fifths.
When they're done, they're gonna be far more conforming than the structure is right now.
Where are the utility lines?
So utility line going right across here. No, I'm sorry, it's right next to this first building, so that right, right across here, this says AE area electric. That's going across here, the new line, or the existing line is going into camp here. The new line will probably go from the same utility pole here and tie somewhere into the side of the home here. I'm not sure where that's going.
Now, this is all pretty much flat leveling in, I guess.
Yeah. That's, that's what we like to do.
Yeah. It's not looking good, and as I said, you know, no one's gonna have ten-one feet or something that's seven-five.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, we'll have, the front of this is I think this fits around. Yeah, it's less, it's about ten feet, yes.
You're trying to keep it back within the power lines.
Yeah.
And the, except, we feel that
The, the, there's this, there's this, seventy, ten, right here, that we may be able to leave there. We had tested, it's all good, but, and the wheat field is way up the road.
One thousand.
Yeah.
Outside of the
So that's, that's quite a ways away.
Is it off their property?
Yes.
The same previous owner. So there's a deed right away that's just
On the other side of the paved road there?
It follows up the road.
Oh.
Quite a ways away.
Yeah.
It's quite a power.
Yeah.
That's gonna be always plain, new pump and change.
Make sure you cover over the styrofoam all the way back, you know, what the trees.
And corrosion, whatever they've been doing, many decades.
I have, I have a lead field that goes up a part of the road. I get half of the cover, I wish I kind of, the other half, I wish I put styrofoam. It froze up once.
It's a bad thing to have.
Not put anything, make sure where you put it, no, put styrofoam down.
If you have any other questions, or what?
Go ahead.
Points of confusion on my part. I've been trying to reconcile the numbers for the proposed structure on the actual application form. With numbers further back in the action. So, post, what it did was, new structure would be thirty-one, twenty-three square feet. Our site plan is different than your site plan in that it doesn't have, it, it, it still has the rectangle that you proposed.
Yeah, this is, this was
That drawing just proved it back in the application, so I wasn't quite sure what to make of that.
Well, this is addition, we, we had a conceptual one first, we presented back in December. Just, and it had the thirty-one, twenty-three, or something like that, just because that was the area of these two camps added together.
Right.
That's, that's where we get
And, and what, what is proposed on that drawing is larger than
Yes, because at the meeting in December, you told us anything back beyond the hundred. You're not limited to the size other than the impervious surface ratio. That's why I included in February the ISR calculations.
Yeah, this is what I'm trying to, I, I have, you know, I'm not questioning that discussion at all. It's more of, I'm trying to figure out will it be clear six months from now what we're approving? Because we have conflicting numbers in the application.
This is the latest one.
This is the latest one we've submitted.
Well, and maybe so, you know, in exhibit A, that's the, the old site plan.
Right. Then that was conceptual just for discussion purposes. So if you want to write, if you want to write the word superseded on that, I think that's probably
Okay, well, yeah, that's where I was going, because I, like I said, on the face of this, it looks like we have two conflicting site plans. The way the applications put together.
I think Anthony printed both out because he wanted to show the difference between what was suggested in December as opposed to
Oh, so, so this February fourth cover letter and everything behind it is the real application?
It's, it's the supplemental information that you needed, that we weren't able to provide at the December.
Okay, well, that would explain why some of the numbers don't match with what's on the application form. And that, from our perspective, it could be problematic, not just for clarity.
This is complying with the ordinance, yeah. Would you like us to submit a new application form?
I don't know.
We need to have
We're complying.
No one's saying you're not. All we're saying is that we need to have good data in the town office.
It's been updated in September, forty-nine page application.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is, is that whatever we have in front of us is what we'd be approving.
Yeah, that's it.
So, all I'm saying
The original one has nothing to do with this one. It was a concept, we didn't even have a house designed yet.
Yeah.
We came in and explained that to you, but we told us what we could do. Get a new one according to what you requested. All right. So man has to spend ten thousand dollars to a forty-nine page application, tear out his own fucking house.
So we have to separate these somehow, separate what we got before.
This is what's annoying now, this is the latest one. Does it meet the ordinances or doesn't?
Excuse me. Craig, you had a question?
No. We just need to seems like what George is describing is that we have two different stuff in front of us.
Yeah, we just want clarity, that's all.
That discussion for really was conceptual only?
Understood. No one's disputing that?
We all understand that now, and I understand you want to be able to ensure that we have that same understanding in six months.
Right, and so, you know, what counts are the numbers on the application form, and they happen to differ than the numbers that are represented on that site plan.
What, okay, what I could do quite easily is prepare a new application form and submit that directly to the gentleman. And with that Colonel meeting.
Well, I would actually be fine with if we just amended it here and now you initialed it.
Yeah.
Rather than
If we could do
That wasted another meeting off and your time, and
I'd be happy to do that, so.
I don't want to piss off your client anymore than he's already pissed off.
So, so Jeff, let me just say this, what we have done consistently over time with other applicants is when there's been a discrepancy, just like what we're talking about here. We've asked people to come up in front of everybody and edit it, sign, and date. And that's been, that's been sufficient, so this is consistent with that. We, we do not want to cost you more time or the applicant more time or money.
Or mine.
I think the, so the the only number I need to change is one, you clearly wrote my signature, is that?
Yeah, right, so I, I take it that goes from the thirty-one, twenty-three square feet to what, thirty-nine, seventy?
No, to thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-five, which is what I have on my, on the certificate. The thirty-nine, seventy is what we're allowed.
Okay. Under the twenty percent.
Under the twenty, yes. What we're actually asking for is thirty-seven, thirty-five. And I believe that's the only change. In the, unless we talk about something in there.
But number eleven is already changed, does that change also number nine?
Good question. No, that's thirty, thirty-two, oh, seven, nine. Thirty-two, oh, seven, nine is the twenty percent of the area with, or that's the area within the shoreline, that, that stays the same. Yeah, that's the same. Number ten stays the same, so thirty-two, oh, seven, nine. Total number of structures on the lot, three, in, in the existing condition. We're proposing two. I don't see any opportunity to
You're retaining the shed?
Yes.
So, so I guess Chris and Suckers square footage is, what's gonna be changing, huh?
Yeah, so in
And, and just
Do you have an official one we're going to modify?
I would say, I would turn to Richard, do you have the original?
I think so.
Because we just have copies, Jeff.
Yeah.
I think I emailed this to everybody.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know what the original is, I don't think that was key here. Perhaps not. Anthony asked me if I had it last week, and I said I don't have it.
You guys don't have the book?
No. Well, although
Maybe this came.
We have it with, you know, the
Is that
Somebody must have it from the town office.
Right.
No, I sent that originally.
Oh, you sent it?
That's all
Oh, okay.
So if we can
Use one.
You know, I can mark up his, and then sign it.
Stanford original. We got a virtual stamp.
I'll read the word original on it.
Right, yeah.
I would just say that's what's submitted to the, to the planning board, it's supposed to be originally, personally, but yeah, we can do it here, and we're all doing it together.
And I'll initial it, and so
Yeah.
The old fashioned way.
And I'm all I gotta do with Richard's
Pen to paper.
I'm putting thirty, seven, thirty-five square feet. Now I'll initial it, and do it. Two seventeen.
Okay, so, um, so just to help us out here, so the new values are on that, correct?
Yes, as far as the structure square footage was changed.
And do you mind just telling us what that number is?
Yep, so the proposed structure square footage was changed from thirty-one, twenty-three to thirty-seven, thirty-five square feet.
Okay.
Which is still within the allowable building.
Could you say it again?
Sure.
The
The proposed structure square footage was originally three thousand one hundred and twenty-three feet. It is now three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five square feet. And the allowable, allowable building area is thirty-nine, seven, so
Gotcha.
Still two hundred feet plus.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying, thanks. All right, great, so we've got that signed dated thing right there, okay. What other questions do we have about this application so far? Craig, any questions? Sarah? George?
Well, minor clarification.
Sure.
Jeff, on your last page where you do the twenty percent impervious or unvegetated calculations, in the bottom, there's a note, alternatives to consider. None of those would increase the amount of unvegetated area. Would they?
No, if, if, if you had
That one of them might actually decrease it.
Yeah, if you, if you did the, I mean, if they wanted to do more, they could do something like a reinforced turf.
Right.
We all understand from previous discussion.
Right.
Reinforced turf, parking area, stepping stones for a walkway, actually, that's almost like a impervious, you know, you'd have, the water would run off the stones and run into the grass right there, it's not a and they could park on the opposite side of the road, because they, you can see here, the road kind of goes along very close to that two hundred and fifty foot setback, so if they put parking spaces over here, only part of them would be within that two hundred and fifty foot setback, so the front of them would be
One of the reasons I ask is, the ordinance actually because of when it was crafted back in the seventies, nobody was talking about impervious surface areas. It, it's based on twenty percent unvegetated, I think it's one in the same in this particular case, but in some sites it's not. Um, so I just wanted to caution you on that.
Yeah, I'm using GTP's definition of, of unvegetated, which is anything that's not grown grass, so that'd be gravel.
Right.
Pavement.
Right, okay, yeah, so it's one in the same in your cases, I, I don't want to get cut off in the no one flag, or it's just in, in, we've had some cases where there's been areas that have been unvegetated that didn't get counted because people weren't thinking of vegetated. Um, the, the only other thing I have here is the there's gonna be, the building, the new building is gonna be on a slab or frost wall. And that means a DEP certified contractor will be needed. And that, that hasn't been provided, so we can handle that as a condition of approval.
Agreed, and they haven't selected the con, well, he's gonna be doing some of the work, but I'm not sure who's gonna do the concrete work.
Yeah.
So
So the requirement is just that, you have a soil erosion control plan, which a lot of our applications don't have one as detailed as that by any means, but but there's a requirement in the ordinance that, well, it's like the state requirement of the DEP requirement for a DEP certified contractor when there's excavation work involved. So, but we can handle, typically, we can handle that as a condition of approval, and that information, before construction started, provided through the code enforcement office. And then the only other thing, as we go through the findings of fact and laws you know, stormwater control.
Right, and those are standard, Jeff, you've probably heard us talk.
Just following DDP's best practices.
Right, thank you.
By the way, I don't know if anybody else had this question, but I did some rough estimates, because I, I wanted to make sure that we weren't moving square footage towards late, we weren't making something more conforming. We're not, we're making it less, this proposal is less conforming.
You know.
Yeah, I know. Too many negatives.
More conformant.
Yeah, more conformant. Yeah, because worse work footage is being moved beyond a hundred, a hundred feet from the lake.
Oh, is that like the tipping point?
Yeah, yeah, because if you build an entirely new structure and you get it behind a hundred feet, beyond a hundred feet, it's conformant.
Yep. Okay. Good points. Okay. Any other questions? Do you have any concerns?
No, I think that's acceptable.
Okay. So I would say at this point, if there are no other questions, no other concerns, I would say we're into the area that we would be looking at the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Portion of the night. Are we all in agreement there? So give me a minute, please. I need to do some, I'm going to be actually. Writing on a copy. Standby. Okay, so the applicant. Is Paul and Carrie Dennis.
The one thing that was easier when we were meeting remotely.
To know it.
But if we're meeting remotely, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to amend the application right here and now.
I can fax it. I, yeah, decent turf. They're aware, you make it with this work. I still like anyone remotely.
I do too.
Save me a half hour drive.
Yeah. Yeah, there's that.
I just leave fires on the road and I will have to do it.
Who was it? I'm trying to think my mind. Where's it? And Zen's, Hagen Road, so it goes up to the point, right? Where, where is it?
This is a hundred ways out there. There are two or three camps beyond this.
Okay, so it's on what, on the. South side of the peninsula?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a pretty location.
And then what's this? So we on to the two or three further out, the real big place out there, Ian?
I, I haven't been any further than this one. It was a mobile place. They might have rebuilt it since I worked on it.
Are you working on?
Oh, they want to bury it down.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, so I've written down so far, so the applicants on today's date, which is two seventeen. Twenty-two, applied for shoreline permit four, and I use the same wording that you had used, Jeff, which was the demolition of two camps and construction of one replacement camp. Uh, the application was presented to the planning board on two seventeen. This is officially, because before it was conceptual.
Yes, yeah.
And they're talking about any of the subsequent meetings, which we have not yet had, at which the application was considered. So these findings of fact and conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permit application. Conclusions of law. So based upon the above, based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to it. And the above findings affect the Belgrade Planning Board finds that the project is. Or is not permitted. Is permitted. True. Would someone help me on the right wording for this part where it says? That the project is or is not permitted. And then there's a big blank space for use under, what's the best wording to use there?
In the blank?
Yeah, just. No.
Because. It's allowed use for that zone.
Well, if you overlook the line altogether, it kind of reads.
Yeah, that was what you said.
Is permitted and then under section fourteen table one in your.
Yeah, just, just circle S.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have circled this, but I just want to make sure we are.
Isn't he using the cam?
Yeah, it's about that land use table. With allowed uses. I think.
Uh, under section fourteen table one in the ordinance and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions of section sixteen D of the ordinance. So now this is where we go through. Seven things we go to those. So the first one is that it will maintain safe and helpful conditions. So I'm just going to write down a couple of things. So. Based on. Application submissions. And.
However, public record, thank you.
Then I will reference that same language as we go forward, so. Um, so that number one, let me recap, will maintain safe and helpful conditions. So by a vote, the board found this standard was met. So this is about safe and helpful conditions. So we'll call votes. So Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I too agree, so that would be five in favor, none opposed. On that one. Number two, it will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes, when the stormwater condition.
Agreed? Number three, will adequately provide for all, for the disposal of all wastewater. So by a vote, the board found that this standard was met. So this is about wastewater. Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I too in favor. Like that. So five in favor, none opposed. Four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. This is having an adverse impact on those things. So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yep, same. Five in favor, none opposed. Five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I am in favor, two, five in favor and the opposed. Uh, that six, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in a comprehensive plan.
In a.
Seven, will avoid problems with flood plain development and use. Flood plain development use, we did.
Probably.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it's, um, yeah.
You can say yes.
Yeah. But if you don't mind, we'll, we'll vote on it. So, so Craig?
Yes.
Pete? Sarah?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
I too am in favor of that. I am in favor, none opposed, based on. Applications submitted on public records. So then next is eight, is inconformist with the section with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. And we have a number of them to go through. Um, and I think some of them may be found to be non-applicable or N A. And then I think we will vote on them at the end. Is the board in favor of doing it that way?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so. So we'll read it again. By a vote, the board found that this standard was met based on the evidence in the record and further as follows. So this is about inconformist with the land use standards. The industry standards among them are a minimum lot standards.
Yeah.
And then principal and accessory structures. Right, that's not N A, right? And so we'll go through all these and then I think do a roll call vote for what is not, not applicable.
Or is that?
Or, yeah, or is that?
Please stay positive.
Yeah, yeah. C, campgrounds. Thank you. Uh, D, individual private campsites. E, commercial and industrial uses. F, parking areas.
Well, that's, yeah, right.
I think it's yes, because it's, yeah, I would say yes. Yeah. Um, G, roads and driveways.
Yes.
There is a driveway. Uh, H, signs. Uh, I, stormwater runoff. Yes. When it meets by, when met by the conditions. And. Uh, J, septic, septic waste disposal systems. That'd be yes. K, essential services. Uh, L, mineral exploration and extraction. M, agriculture. N, timber harvesting and land management roads. O, clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees and dead tree removal. They proposed.
Not any here.
In a. Q, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. R, revegetation requirements.
Yeah.
Is it in a? Or is it yes?
Uh, it's in a.
In a, thank you.
That has to do with trees, not.
Oh.
Not grass. Yeah. They'll put grass back in.
Yeah, right.
Or the house.
Right.
Okay, S, erosion and sedimentation control. T, shoreline stabilization. Uh, U, soils.
That's in a, that's what I'm thinking. Not a new system.
V, water quality.
Water?
Yes.
Water quality.
Water.
It applies.
Yeah, yeah.
W, historical and archaeological sites.
In a.
X, resource protection. It's not applicable. Conditions of approval need to be met, needed to meet required Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance findings in section sixteen.
Vote on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's true. Thank you. So we had a lot of N A's, but we did talk about minimum lot standards, principal accessory structures, parking areas, roads and driveways, stormwater runoff. Uh, septic waste disposal. Erosion, sedimentation control. And water quality. So as a slate of items. Those in favor. So Craig?
Yes.
Pete? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. For all those things. Great. So therefore, and then conditions of approval needed to meet required shoreline zoning ordinance findings of fact in section sixteen D, so our standard one is this. Uh, managed stormwater runoff from new or expanded structures. Um, in accordance with section fifteen I of the ordinance and the main D E P's best management practices as outlined in conservation practices for homeowners publication. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. Note, this is a standing, a standing condition that applies to all permits unless deemed unnecessary. And were there any other? Conditions? Good point. So if we say, said something like. Uh, the D E P certified contractors number be submitted to the town office prior to construction.
Yeah. Name and number.
The town office of the code enforcement office.
Code enforcement.
Thank you.
Was an opportunity for it to rattle around in the front desk somewhere.
Yeah, that's why. Is, I know you'll put it in the right place.
Yep, I know you're very familiar with the. Or advanced D E P or management manual, these conservation practices for homeowners, sort of the lay version of that. So it's one of the same. Just, this is the. Stormwater for dummies.
I, I'm not, I'm actually not very familiar with this one.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's a pamphlet.
Yeah, it says, don't make a mess, don't let the water.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same principles.
Okay, just one second. We're going to vote on the entire thing. I'm writing on this because I, I'm working on a copy, so I'm just going to say, uh, copy used at. Planning. Board meeting. Two seventeen twenty-two. So that way, this, what I'm writing on goes to him. He'll have it all. All right? All right, so decision based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law on two seventeen twenty-two, today's date, the town of Belgrade Planning Board approved by a vote, where we vote. The shoreline permit application of is Paul and Carrie Dennis. Uh, with the above conditions, which we just went over, right? The second one, I'll reiterate, D E P certified contractor's name and number be submitted to the C E O prior to construction.
That's not necessary prior to demolition.
No, it's, it's about the, it's, because that's on pillars. Yeah, it's about the construction of the foundation.
Right.
So I know, I know they're looking to you there and do the demolition.
Yep.
Yeah, that's about the excavation. If, if, if this was going up back on pillars or whatever, then we, we would require that.
But when you move in dirt and.
Yeah.
So with the above conditions at the meeting on today's date. Develop these written findings affecting conclusions of law and adopted these findings on today's date. So this will be vote for the whole thing. Ready? Craig?
Yes.
Pete? Yes?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me too. So that's five in favor, none opposed. Great. So Richard, I'm going to hand this over to you if you don't mind.
And the president, Ron, will attach the amended. Uh, permit that he saw.
Yep, keep it all together. That way we have clean data in hand. Cause you know what's going to happen? The first, first nail this pounded. Someone's going to call you or Tony or Anthony or somebody and say, what's going on? Ah, he can tell you about that. Active permit that was signed on this date and all that other stuff, so.
So we're gonna have to sign, uh, yeah, be signed on the phone.
We're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be signed.
Yeah.
We don't have that.
No, we don't have it.
So that's, that's the reason why we were asking for the original.
Okay, if, um, after we sign it, if you could send me a copy, I can.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, I'll give a copy to the contractors. Uh, and to the owners. I can take your distribution.
And four. So I think we're in good shape. Very good. Well played. All right, so we have, we have made a decision. I'll hand you this in a second, but on the back page of it is the next door of business, which is the minutes, so I can't hand it to you yet.
Ri- Richard, is it your sense that the original? Not so much the application, but the forms that we. not so much the application, but the uh, forms that we normally sign are available because Anthony's on rotation or?
That's what I'm guessing. He, he had this all done up before he went on vacation, everything, and uh, so when you see, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, it's fine to do it electronically.
I don't have a better rate.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't.
It's okay.
I like that.
We can live with it. We can live with it.
We're all set?
We're all set.
I believe so. Thank you for your time.
Apologize to your client for setting them off. Whatever.
I get this all together, I'll.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you. Great. Sorry. Does everybody have the minutes from January twentieth? Yes, sir. At the very end, so keep going.
Printing both pages, you know, screws me up.
Yeah, I know. It's hard.
So the new business essentially is not followed up on. Hence the reason commercial stuff isn't here. I haven't heard from Mike Bragg. I talked to Kyle uh, on Tuesday and told him everything he needs to come up with and I've heard since, soon, he's doing what he needs to do.
Okay. Yeah, just maybe Anthony, y- you gathered this from the email traffic, but um, I think we're trying to work towards people submitting their complete applications by the Thursday in advance of the meeting so that the materials that are sent out to us on Friday.
That's correct. And that was not that. But this coming Thursday.
I mean, that's something else.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you did what you needed to do.
Yeah. Need myself a bill.
You a good tennis player?
No, but I'm a heck of a ping pong.
I'm gonna challenge you on that.
The garment's been thrown.
I'm cleaning a ping pong hole.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Why would people say like the tennis elbow? I tell them like pung bow.
Yeah.
Pung bow.
Pung bow.
All right, have people gone through the minutes? Uh, what edits, if any, are out there? Everybody?
Uh, yeah, I do, or uh, first off, though, with a question with regard to new business, the commercial review opinion, uh, the coffee cart thing.
Yeah.
I, so the bold print uh, after discussion, the board agreed towards can apply. I, I question whether we agreed to anything. And whether uh, language, it said something more alike, the board was unable to agree that the additional of another commercial use uh, to, and if the dimensional standards of the minimum lot size ordinance apply, uh, because it didn't seem to me we give them any firm advice to walk out of here with. Am I not following that correctly?
You actually are, and then also there was a, a question about the model parking downtown.
Yeah, I mean, we resolved the part, Rich and I were both confused of where this was, that, and that wasn't, you know, was not the shoreline zone, but we thought it was someplace else.
Yeah.
Based on some information we could provide, I think, by Anthony, but um, the uh, but, so that eliminated shoreline zoning, then the other question what was on the table was, how does the minimum lot size ordinance apply? And that's where we had uh, differences of opinion.
We, yes.
Didn't apply at all to, it applied.
Right. So.
I mean, we didn't vote, so.
Right.
Right. I, I just questioned if we could say in our minutes that we reached agreement when I don't, that we did it.
So do you mind staying that one more time about?
Yeah, I, you want me to read what I kind of roughed out?
Yeah, please.
So that sentence in the bold and under commercial review, uh, I, I would, seeing how much time we spent on this, I would add considerable discussion effort, considerable discussion to board, and then I would eliminate the rest of that sentence and insert was unable to agree as to whether this was an addition of another commercial use to this lot, and if the dimensional standards of the minimum lot size ordinance apply, period. And, and to capture, you know, or more accurately representative media, I, I thought maybe something like uh, members of the public and village business owners spoke in support and opposition to this proposal.
We're concerned about parking.
Yeah.
That was explicitly stated. Okay, so, so I, I like, personally, I like those couple of sentences, because I think that summarizes that discussion. Um, it summarizes it succinctly. In my opinion.
So we just incorporate in one, in the minutes.
That's exactly right. And so by saying it out, I'm hoping what would happen, because Julie's doing the minutes though. That she, yeah, that she'll be, she'll be able to hear this recording.
Good.
And then attend. All right, so, so there is, there is one edit. That's there. Are there other edits? Hey, I, I, if you don't mind, I still am confused as to why, and maybe Julie will tell me again. We have the very confusing number one, old business, number two, new business, and number three, old business again. It seems odd, but there's a reason for it. I just can't remember what it is.
Um, I, I think.
So business, because she was fixing the, the uh, minutes, is that?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the second is exclusively just the minutes, and I think Julie explained last time that, you know, it's not new business. Uh, and so she labels it old business, and I, I think this is something that was started long before.
That's right. It was a carryover from previous.
You know, I don't know what the right way is to do it, but I agree, it, it.
Gary over of all business.
Well, there must be a standard protocol for how you deal with this. I mean, the select board, everybody else in the world has to deal with the same thing.
I, I know, I, I don't wanna make a mountain of a mola, I just, when I first look at it, I'm like, what is going on? So anyway, I can live with it. You know, I might suggest we use some term like what you said, Pete, or if the standard thing for number three. If the standard thing is old business, you know, you know, minutes revised or something, then to use that language. Okay, so I can live with it.
Or, you know, it's not old business, it's not new business, it's consideration of January twenty minutes, you know?
Yeah.
Just eliminate that heading entirely.
Yep. But I like that consideration of previous minutes or something. Yeah, that works. Yeah. All right, anyway, any other edits?
Yeah, I, I just have one more. It's on the commercial application B under new business, uh, like the last line on the first page in bold. Uh, the sentence that ends with numbers point seven thirty, thirty-seven, seventy, forty-seven needing more information. And I think what needs to be added there is something like, in addition to the lack of a site plan. So that sentence would read, the application was determined incomplete with numbers blah, 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 needing more information in addition to the lack of a site plan.
Great, thank you. So you have some good edits that are explicit and, and get to the point, harder than matter. Um, I'm hoping that that first of all, Richard, that they consult with you on, you know, frequently and early. And that they know that a site plan and other information is needed. Great.
Uh, we did have that discussion, and everything was pointed out to, to Kyle.
Okay. That's okay.
Working on things.
I just wanna make sure we're being clear what we're asking for. That way he knows, that's all. All right, so if we're all good there, I would entertain a motion to accept the amended minutes.
Make a motion to accept the, the amended minutes of January, I mean, the minutes of January twenty as amended.
I second it.
Thank you, and second today. More discussion? All those in favor. Craig? Pete? Yeah, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. All right, um, any other town business? Anything, Richard, you want us to know about?
Yes, I got an email from a gentleman who's contemplating putting Dollar General here in Belgrade.
Really?
You'd like to meet with me and probably Anthony on March ten. Discuss that. I don't have any real information to give you as far as location, anything else. Or move to Belgrade, I believe. Examine this site, whatever, wherever maybe you want to sit down with me. That's something that'll become a way, soon, unless it falls apart.
I, I guess, I have a question. Do we have anything in the commercial ordinance we can ask the applicants to change the cosmetic, you know, the, the appearance of the typical store or?
No.
We can ask.
We can ask.
And they can do it out of the general.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Because like that. Remember, we talked about it a long time ago.
Yeah.
Some of the other stores like that, free, free port, I guess, or down on the coaster.
Yeah, Richard, just for your information, in the lot next to the town office here, they had um, and their out of state consultants had proposed the uh, facility there. It didn't happen because they couldn't meet the minimum lot size requirement, but um, but at that time, Gary, well, he was still working at Gary Fuller, was still working at Augusta, he, he told us that you know, through their, uh, the Augusta planning board learned during the course of their hearings that that they have multiple designs. It isn't always just that cookie cutter rectangle thing, but you, but we don't have anything about architectural styles or anything like that in the commercial development review ordinance.
I just think, oh, made out loud, when we get, if we get the, if we do get applicant, maybe we can kind of look around on our own, come up with pictures of other towns like that booth thing, but you know, different design, different, you know, one of their other designs that fits into their community, you know, better.
Yeah.
Same time in Kingfield, I had someone send me that picture.
Oh, okay, yeah, we could, do they have standards there that they can use and say, okay, if you're gonna build something, you have to meet these?
No, just the design of a Dollar General in Kingfield wasn't a cookie cutter, so I have a friend that goes up there, Carabasa, three, four times a week. Can you snap a picture of that for me?
Yeah.
I mean, we can ask if they would, you know?
Right.
Out of the time, you know, if they could propose something, I mean, we can't.
Sure, but so, but if we, as a board, each one was, I kind of think about, we've traveled around, take pictures or get some examples of what we, what they've done, say, here, you've done this to this, you know, this particular town. You think maybe you could do something for us? And ask them, but give them some information as to, we know, you know, you've done other places and see what happens.
I don't get up Kingfield way very often. I, I haven't seen what they've done up there. The ones I've seen from them or their competitors are, this is the way we do it, boom, you know? Cookie cutter. Uh, there's nothing attractive about them. They're just little miniature box stores.
This kind of have a pitch through.
I'll, I'll ask Ryan down with the coach, because I know people down there, they, they've had that issue.
I mean, some towns, Freeport being the most, one of the first, and they do have architectural standards for their downtown village or whatever, but we don't.
If, if we did, there would be something we could point to and say.
Yeah.
You would make the standard, you know, to commit, but without that, the, I think the suggestion, you know, or to ask is, we can do that.
I mean, the worst thing I can do is say no, say no.
Uh, this may all fall apart like what, yeah.
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 I, like I said, the email was quite vague, and he just wanted a meeting.
Yeah.
Is it possible, I don't know if anybody knows this, is it possible it's the property on twenty-seventh that Will and Val advance has owned?
Hey, that name came off an email, I think.
Yeah, cuz I think, when, just apparently, somebody approached, did somebody approach Gary, or did he just get kind of scuttlebutt? And that was the property that he mentioned to us.
Someone approached him.
Been for sale for a while.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the email, was he said, we're in the process of obtaining property from Belleville.
Oh.
Yes, I, I, you guys know the area.
That makes you objective. Yeah, uh, that'll be interesting, because uh, when they proposed the next door, the public came out in force against it.
Yeah, I presume we're gonna have something like that again.
You know, the tricky thing there, though, is, is no matter how much people come out in, in our position, if it's meeting the, whatever it is we have in the ordinance.
Right.
Then we'd have nothing to, to.
No basis.
No basis language to deny.
Yeah. No, that's.
Man, it's not. We pass it out through, but at least it's got a pitch through.
Yeah.
Better.
Better, better than nothing.
Yeah, that's an improvement.
You might even take a picture of it. See? So I, Lord.
I, I order some. Well, we didn't have enough to do anyway, so. That'll consume some serious time. That comes to pass.
Anything else, Richard, for us? Okay. I'd say it's it for tomorrow. Alright, all in favor of calling it a night? All in favor?
Yes.
George, Sarah. Pete, Craig, all in favor.
Any help clean up?
You're, when I. Talked to Rich earlier in the week, he told me about this procedure that I couldn't believe he was thinking about, maybe trying to make it to the meeting, because if it was a four hour procedure, he was gonna be under full anesthesia.
Yeah.
Yeah. Joking, man.
And that that particular procedure, they go in through a big major idler.
Yeah, right, they go on their way.
Yeah.
What do you have done?
Oh, yeah, um, just one second, would you mind stopping the recording?
Thank you, sir.
I think it's over by. Go to your right on the upper top.